Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. Welcome to the October 10th City Council Meeting. We have eight items on our agenda. And before we get started, I would like to welcome our newest member, Gene Kearney. So, welcome aboard. Mr. Fawcett, if you would, please continue with the roll call of members.
Tatman.
Here.
Proll.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Corcoran.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
If everybody would, please stand for the press release.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the previous meeting have been discarded at full review. If they've been read and you are okay with it, do we have a motion to accept these notes? Motion by Mrs. Neil, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, it's report of committees. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Yes, Ms. Patrick.
Thank you. The Utilities Transit Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number seven, it's the first reading of a resolution adopting the recommendation of the Utility Rate Review Committee of no rate increase in 2016 as it pertains to the water and sewer rates. The Utility Rate Review Committee met on its, the first meeting was on February 29th, 2016, and at this meeting, it was agreed that the mayor and his new administration needed more information to reach an educated decision as to support an automatic 2 percent increase or to adjust an up-ordered down-line. The second meeting was October 29th, and at this meeting, additional information was presented, and questions from the first meeting were answered, and it was a consensus of the committee not to allow the automatic 2 percent rate increase to take place at such a late date in this year. And since the Utility Rate Review Committee's decision was to not raise rates at the appropriate time, I will ask that the three-read rule be waived so that we can submit the, so that we can pass this resolution. Second item is item number eight, and it's the first reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation and to accept thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in grant funds from ODOT. This resolution allows the city to accept thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars as a reimbursement to offset the fare box loss incurred by the city. This loss was a result of the city offering a reduced fare to the elderly and people with disabilities during the calendar year 2015. This is the same contract that we have entered into in previous years and at the appropriate time, and we ask that the three-read, three-read rule be waived so that we can execute the contract before the October 20th deadline. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Before I get to the next committee report, I'd like to say I apologize to our audience at home for the camera that was buzzing around the room. It did it again. We're having some video issues. We've lost one of the cameras, and this one I have control of, but for some reason, it went everywhere. So, at any rate, just thought I'd tell people what's going on out in the home audience. Any other committee reports? Sorry. Yes, Mr. Florima. Let's see, Flora, get over there, please.
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services has one item on the agenda. It's a first reading of item number one, to appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars for community-related expenses for the Chillicothe Municipal Court. This is from their fund. It does not, this is monies that are collected through the year. We are merely giving them, we're just moving it for them upon their request. They've also requested that they get this money sooner than later, so at the appropriate time, I will pass away the three-read rule. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Florima. Any other committee reports? Yes, Ms. Corcoran.
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Committee has one item on the agenda. Item number two, grant use of Yachtangie Park in certain city streets for the annual J.C.'s and Evening Lions Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 29th. And at the appropriate time, I would like to waive the three-read rule, and I would just also, at this time, like to thank the J.C.'s and the Lions for all the hard work they do to put this parade on, and it has certainly been enjoyed by our community for several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Proll.
The Finance Committee has three items on tonight's agenda. Item number three is at first reading, and it is an ordinance to accept and appropriate a vendor refund check in the amount of six thousand, sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Seeing as this is money coming back in, I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule and accept that money at the appropriate time. Item number four is also at first reading. It is an ordinance to appropriate forty thousand dollars to be used for the initial startup budget for the land bank. We recently received news that we did receive the grant for the land bank, and so that we can get that program up and running, I will ask at the appropriate time that we please waive the three-read rule so that these monies that we agreed upon being used for the land bank can be put into action. Item number six is at first reading. This is an ordinance to appropriate one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars for the end-of-year 2016 operation. This was the itemized list that we talked about in the committee meeting that there's no objections to. Most of these are covering past-due bills, and so to make sure that we can pay our bills, I will ask that at the appropriate time, we please waive the three-read rule if that is agreeable with the body. And that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proll. Any other committee reports at this time?
Dustin. Item number five, Jason's Finance Committee, item number one.
Oh, sorry. I just skipped over to him. Yeah, sorry. Item number five as well is accept and appropriate eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents received by the Chillicothe Fire Department as a reimbursement for overtime expenses incurred while teaching CPR classes at Transit. And I would ask at the appropriate time that we waive the three-read rule so that we can accept that, those funds back in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Proll. Any other committee reports? If not seen any, we move on to the reports to our officials. The mayor, Mr. Penny.
Thank you, President Arnold. Just touch on a few of tonight's items. I'm in agreement with all the requests and support, the requests for the three-read rules on the items mentioned tonight. I'll touch briefly on Councilman Proll's mentioning of item four and the land bank. We did receive the good news late last week that our grant application was approved. We, if you recall, the minimum amount of money we can get, we will be awarded, is five hundred thousand dollars. The email that I received indicated that there will be a follow-up email indicating exactly how much we are awarded. What we did was, we did the minimum application, plus I identified nine properties in a pipeline, and for each of those nine properties, if they are approved through the application, you receive an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. So, the maximum grant award the city could possibly receive is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Needless to say, that's a pretty big impact. Part of the grant requirements, the funding requirements, is that by May of next year, the land bank owns fifty percent of the properties identified in the pipeline. Now, there's no clarification in the grant. If you have an odd number of properties in your pipeline, is that five properties or four, because in our case, it's nine. But in any case, we have from now until next May to have four or five properties owned by the land bank. In some cases, that might be easier than others. For example, there's one property identified that the city owns, so deeding that to the land bank could be easier than a tax forehook. But we certainly want to avail ourselves to all the money, and so for that reason, I would also support Dustin's request to essentially get the ball rolling. We will also be asking for advances from their loan fund, so I would expect that the city will be fully made whole, with the exception of there will be director insurance money and a couple other setup-type costs that are not reimbursable. The things that are reimbursable are after you actually do the demolition. So, of the forty thousand upfront, in fact, can you remember what we identified? I think we did, we said a maximum of ten thousand in legal or administrative costs. Those are the costs that I would not expect to be reimbursed. Other than that, any costs associated or related to demolition of a property should be reimbursed to the city. So, in order to get the ball rolling there, I would ask for your support on that item. And then item six, which is a big chunk of change, is, as Councilman Proll mentioned, a combination of paying old bills and making sure that we can really finish this year with vendors made whole. It's been a big push, both myself and the Safety and Service Director, Carmen. I will point out that as of this past Friday, and I'm sure auditors, certainly, will might touch on this, the city finance system govern, MS Govern, blinked its last green dot intentionally, but the system is no more, and so we will be transitioning to a new system and cutting checks and that kind of thing. Should be done, you know, back to business in the orderly fashion, but we want to make sure that we have money available for vendors and smoothly transition into the calendar year and budget cycle. And then to touch on Councilwoman Patrick's report on the Utility Rate Review Committee, one of the big items of note that led to the recommendation not to go with the automatic increase is, as we sort of dove into comparison of our fees to other cities, we noted a pretty dramatic spread, not between our consumption costs or the fees that we charge our consumers, but our TAP fees. So, the TAP fees that the city of Chillicothe charges, both residential and commercial properties, are significantly lower than relatively similar-sized cities or cities in our region. And so that was the main reason we recommended to pass on this year's automatic increase. And so, it's likely the council could expect an assignment to review those TAP fees. It was difficult to say, well, we should do this automatic increase, which affects, you know, all consumers, when it seems that we are so far off based on TAP fees. Utility Director Johnson is investigating that. It's one thing to say we're much lower, but it's another thing to say, here's what a reasonable basis for that TAP, those TAP fees would be. So, he's working on that, and we'll be coming to council once we have a solid proposal. And last, but certainly not least, I am happy to announce that we have a leaf pickup schedule. The press release will go out tomorrow, but we will begin leaf pickup next Monday, October 17th. And just like we did large item pickup, this year, the leaf pickup schedule will follow trash pickup schedule. And so, in the first week, if your trash pickup day is a Monday, the first week of leaf pickup correlates with that. And so, the second week is Tuesday trash pickup days, and so on, so forth. There'll be a minimum of two passes through every trash route, so that means that it'll take basically a full week to do one trash day. As you know, this will be our first year attempting to do it this way. We will appreciate patience as we work through it. We are open to comment, suggestions. We're going to do our best. One of the things to keep in mind is that some of those weeks are shorter than others. You've got Thanksgiving, Veterans Day folded in there, and inclement weather is always a concern. And of course, all trash routes are not built equally, so we acknowledge that some of those routes have many more trees consequently, many more leaves than other trash routes. And so, when we say we'll do a minimum of two passes, that's what we mean, but it's also likely that we'll be doing some filler here and there to make sure that all leaves are picked up before we get into the bad weather. But there will be a press release. We'll have information on Facebook. I'll be sure to get details to all council members, the instructions on where the leaves should go, and a number to call with questions, but you can expect that to start next Monday, October 17th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Penny. Thank you very much. Sounds good. And our auditor, Ms. Stettnag.
I also wanted to express my agreement and support with agenda items three, four, five, and six this evening, but I also want to give an update on what's going on in the auditor's office, as the mayor just talked about. As of last Friday, we started implementing new software, started actually beginning of last week. So, for the next six days, we probably will not have access to any financial information. We definitely will not be able to cut any checks. We're hoping to be live again by the middle of next week, up and running, so it's exciting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Stettnag. Ms. Rutherford's my head this evening. I have actually an announcement I would like to make concerning our new council member and committee assignments. Actually, again, I'll welcome Ms. Jean Kearney to our council. Dr. Jean Kearney. I said a while back that I was waiting for the replacement of Josh Carte before I announced my decision on committee chair positions. Council Rule Number Two does state that in the event of a vacancy of a chairmanship, that the vacancy shall be filled with one of the remaining committee members and appoint a new member to fill that committee. Alicia Gray and Joel Florima are the remaining members that are on the Community Affairs Committee. Two things can happen. Of course, we follow Council Rule Number Two. Another thing that could actually happen is council rules can be suspended at any meeting with a majority vote, or can be completely amended with a majority vote after three successive meeting readings. Currently, we have an extremely contentious assignment, 16079, which is pending in the Community Affairs Committee, and Josh was the chair of that. Even though there's not been a formal committee meeting held on the assignment, but we have had two public forums, I feel it's in the best interest to continue and abide with Rule Number Two on this assignment, which is keeping the current members involved with the matter. Therefore, I'm appointing Alicia Gray as committee chair, with Joel continuing as member of that committee on this assignment, 16079. I'm going to appoint David Clay to be the third member of this committee. I feel these council members are very well qualified to move forward with this assignment, and we are keeping with Rule Number Two. However, I am making this election just for the assignment of 16079. I still want to keep Alicia Gray to remain as chair of the Human Resources Committee. She's had very much experience with this committee. She's done a fantastic job, and I think she is the best choice for chairing this committee. So, with that, I'm going to, after, I'm going to assign Jean Kearney to the chair of the Community Affairs for future assignments. So, she will fill Josh's positions in all other standing future committee assignments for the Community Affairs. So, we are keeping with, we are keeping with the committee that was originally formed for that assignment, keeping with Rule Number Two, and from here on out, then the Community Affairs will go to Ms. Kearney, and we will keep Alicia Gray standing as our Human Resources Committee Chair. And again, welcome aboard, Jean. Okay? And that's all I have. At this time, we have public participation. We do have a good audience here. I don't know if anybody would like to speak this evening. We do, anybody sign in the sign-in sheet that if you would like to speak, please step forward to the microphone. Rule 21 limits each speaker to a five-minute presentation and a total limitation of fifteen minutes per subject. When you get close to your one minute remaining, I will kind of try to catch your attention and let you know that you have a minute remaining, which gives you time to summarize your presentation. Anybody who wishes to speak can get up at any time, just give us your name and address. So, if anybody, would anybody have anything to say this evening? You are, you're welcome. Not seeing anybody? We move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? Okay? Not seeing any old business? Mr. Fawcett, do we have any petitions and correspondence that you have received?
President Arnold, I just have one notice that I received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control in reference to the transfer of permits from Seventy Thirty Poe, P-O-E, Incorporated of 1257 Western Avenue, to Dasnadas, D-A-S-N-A-D-A-S Incorporated, doing business as Marathon of the same address. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Do we have any, does anybody have any new business that they'd like to bring forward? Okay, not seeing any new business. Committee assignments and meeting dates. I, we've only had three committee assignments since our last meeting, and a couple of them are on tonight's agenda. Utilities has a request for legislation not to increase the water and sewer rates, and that is on tonight. Safety Services has legislation to appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars to the municipal court for computerizing the court from their funds. That's on the agenda. And requests for legislation to allow the fire department to trade in a 2005 squad chassis towards the purchase of a new 2016 Ford F-450 squad. And that's all that we've had. The only meeting date that's been brought forward to me is Nuisance Abatement Board, which is tomorrow, October the 11th, but I didn't catch the time on that.
Two thirty.
Two thirty. And that's over in the conference room over in the city building. Okay? So, nuisance abatement tomorrow, two thirty, over in the city building conference room. Nobody has anything else to add at this point? Then we move on to legislation. So, Mr. Fawcett, whenever you're ready. Item number one.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty-two thousand dollars for computer-related expenses for the Chillicothe Municipal Court and declaring emergency. First read.
Yes, Mr. Florima.
Thank you, President Arnold. As I said, stated before, the twenty-two thousand dollars appropriated are monies that are collected through municipal courts. These funds are part of the general fund, but are raised by the municipal courts and strictly for the use of the municipal court, for merely a pass-through mechanism. So, releasing these funds is not appropriating any additional funds from general fund. So, for this reason, I would like to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on the motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two, please.
First reading of a resolution granting use of Yachtangie Park in certain city streets for the annual J.C.'s and Evening Lions Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 29th, 2016, and declaring emergency. First read.
Yes, Ms. Corcoran.
Yes, at this time, I would ask that we waive the three-read rule for the...
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Proll. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating a vendor refund check in the amount of six thousand, sixty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents, and declaring emergency. First read.
Mr. Proll.
I would ask at this time that we please waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
A motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, fifty cents received by the Chillicothe Fire Department as reimbursement for overtime expenses incurred while teaching CPR classes at Transit and declaring emergency. First read.
Mr. Proll.
I would ask at this time that we please waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, fifty cents received by the Chillicothe Fire Department as reimbursement for overtime expenses incurred while teaching CPR classes at Transit and declaring emergency. First read.
Mr. Proll.
I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule. Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars for end-of-year 2016 operations and declaring emergency. First read.
Mr. Proll.
I would ask at this time that we please waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of a resolution adopting the recommendation of the Utility Rate Review Committee as it pertains to water and sewer rates and declaring emergency. First read.
Ms. Patrick.
So that the committee recommendation of no rate increase can go into immediate effect, I motion to waive the three-read rule.
I would motion to waive the three-read rule. Seconded by Mr. Proll. Roll call on that ordinance, or on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.